I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sherry's back there, way back there. Uh, Scott is, uh, excuse me, made it here at some point. And who else? No adjustments. Uh, on, take out a motion to approve the minutes. At the end, second. Sarah, uh, there is one error, um, in one of the votes.
Page ten.
Page ten. I voted yes and I abstain. Or is absent, excuse me. That absent just should go up with Ann. Any other discussion, errors, omissions on the minutes? You got it? All those in favor approving the minutes?
I think I got it.
Okay, opposed, not voting. So move. Communications, Mr. Gilbert.
How you doing? Um, Mr. Staples asked me to come here to kind of just give you guys a quarterly update of what's been going on and what I've been dealing with in the school. And I think he gave you a handout of general, none of the things that I, what I just call notable activities. It doesn't include everything that I've done so far this year. It doesn't include security checks and if I happen to be around, I may help. I know I've helped Mr. Harrington a few times bring a few deliveries over there and that sort of thing. So I'll just run down through it. Um, if you guys have any questions, feel free to stop me. I'm willing and happy to answer, okay? Um, we've had seventeen criminal events so far this year, of which we've only had five charges. Um, four of them adults, just one juvenile. And this is through December sixth. Um, I've been called for eight out of control students. Only twice I've had to actually use physical restraint to take care of those students. Um, I've done what I call student guidance examples of that. I've had kids come in and ask me questions about maybe what, which way they should go in their life as far as like a career choice or law enforcement choices. Helping them discuss college, maybe pick a path, which way they're gonna go. Uh, done that ten times this year. Student assist, uh, that could be with homework. Uh, I've had a student I've been helping, she's taking college level classes for law enforcement. I've helped her write reports throughout the way. I think she's got an eighty-eight average. Uh, her last grade, she got a seventy. I'd like to talk to her examiner. I disagree with the grade. Uh, that can be food gathering, giving things for kids they may need. Uh, done nine home checks between all the principals at the school, going to homes to find out what we don't have kids, why they're not showing up, um, getting them to school, assist other agencies, that can be anything. Uh, other investigations, for example, I had a student come to me the other day and she had, uh, a very significant violent threat met against her by her boyfriend living in another county. So I contacted that county and they pursued criminal charges against that kid because it was pretty serious. Uh, we've located five students. Uh, the most notable one I would say was on, uh, Frenchboro Island. Uh, come to find out, a grand total of sixty-four people lived on the island, thirty-four people year round. And that's where the student was going to school, but we tracked him down and we found him, so. Um, DHS referrals, we've had three. We've done three lockdown drills. I think that may actually be more than that. Assist staff with like social work issues, uh, protection from abuse order and answers, custodial issues, uh, where kids are supposed to be going, who can take them, who can't, that sort of thing. Uh, we've had three possible school threats. I taught three classes actually this year. We've one had two traffic crashes, which is actually pretty good in a parking lot. Um, and I've assisted staff with multiple things from interviewing, offering guidance, investigations. They've had about fifty-two times and brings the total to about a hundred and fifty-four things since September, so. And, uh, you may see me in a movie soon because many of the kids are pulling me out to put me in their videos for, uh, Mr. Andrews' class. Coming soon to a theater review. Um, any questions at all?
Joe?
Yes. And if you can't go into too much detail, uh, on the home checks, you said you did nine.
Yep.
And this was for students that weren't actually coming to school.
Correct.
Could you say what the results overall were in some generality?
Yeah, we've got the most of the school kids we've got here in school. I found out reasons why they're not. One, we've actually chosen a better path of taking adult ed was better for them. Um, ultimately, we want to get them here and get them their diploma. And that was the best choice for that student, so. And actually, I just got an email from her tonight, so it's good to hear, so.
Yeah?
Yes.
And maybe not a question for you, but for the principals, are we tracking like the truancy rates and everything else? And are they trending up? Do we, are we, are we taking those stats to make sure that, um, I mean, I know he's helping out.
Yeah, I, I, I think that definitely we have trends going up usually right around this time.
Okay.
Uh, and then they start to go down after Christmas and then they'll come back up again, um, towards the end of the year. Uh, I don't know if it's actually making a huge difference. I know it made a difference in three kids right now that we had at the high school.
Right.
Um, we're seeing them more often.
Great. Interesting, follow that too. How's the, um, the vaping situation went on at the high school and the middle school? Are we, uh, are we seeing?
I don't think we've seen any of the middle school that I know of. We've had maybe four pens this year.
Yeah, we haven't had, we haven't seen a whole lot.
That's way down.
Yeah, that's way down. I've, maybe three, maybe four max.
What would you, does that do? I mean, is it because he's, he's around or?
Well, I think part of it's because he's around. I think part of it's because we're more aware. I think part of it's because they're getting better at it. It's a small device, it's pretty easy to hide.
Yep.
Dale?
So you've been approached by students for help and stuff?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Homework and I've had probably, I'd say, five or six students that are interested in law enforcement. I've actually set up ride-alongs for them. I have another one I'm trying to get into, my former PD, because he wants to go to K-9 here when we don't have one at J. But I know I trained the, the guy over in Farmington, so it'd be a good ride for him. We'll see how a dog works, so.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Keller?
Good evening, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Uh, I just wanted to touch base on a couple of different things. First of all, the Jake Lord Play It Safe Foundation fundraiser. Um, this was fantastic. First of all, I want to thank you all, those of you that helped out with either cooking or coming in and volunteering. I think if you came in and volunteered, you found out that there were way more volunteers than there were positions to fill. But that's just really nice to see and to have, uh, to have you come out and help out was, was greatly appreciated. I have not personally spoken with the Lord family, but, um, from the conversations with Megan at LEET, they said, um, that this was the best year by far, um, as far as money raised. So from going in early October saying, "We're not gonna do this," to then being able to turn it around and through our help be able to have them, have their best fundraiser ever, um, was certainly a huge success. So, um, that went very well. Uh, the second thing I want to talk with you tonight is about is football. Uh, we had a community meeting last Wednesday, the fourth. We had twelve people roughly in attendance. Um, four of them were football players, three at the high school, one at the middle school coming up. Um, we discussed our possibilities in regards to the coming year, uh, as far as what we're gonna do with football. Our numbers coming, going into next year are going to be really low. Uh, we have sixteen returners coming back that finished last year. Um, we did, we started with more than that, but through attrition, injury, grades, whatever, um, we ended up with sixteen, uh, that will come back next year. Of those sixteen, one is a junior and six are sophomores. So we're looking at having seven upperclassmen next year to participate on the football program. It'll put us somewhere around twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So we have decided to not, um, pursue a co-op, but to stay on our own. So we are going to send, we'd like to send a letter to the NPA tomorrow to declare that we want to play in the eight-man football league. That being said, the email that I received from Mike Burnham, who's the executive director at the NPA, was that anyone who had a roster of less than twenty-five, um, would be eligible to play in that. I called him, spoke with him about it, um, told him that our numbers in that upper level were really low. Um, and, uh, he said that I should go ahead and apply for that. He figures that having that few upperclassmen, it's really a safety issue at that point in time and that trying to put a lot of freshmen and sophomores against a team that's got a lot of upperclassmen is really a safety issue for our kids. So, um, we will send a letter tomorrow stating that we'd like to join the eight-man league this year.
Any questions, sir?
Yes.
Um, with twenty-six, I'm guessing you won't do a JV league?
Not necessarily. Um, and before we went into the meeting, we spoke with, um, I spoke with Dean Plant, who's the athletic director and football coach at Old Orchard Beach. And, uh, we spoke with Jordan DeMillo, who's the coach down at Moranacook. And they both said that even with twenty-five or twenty-six, you can still run a JV program. You know, when you've only got eight on the field, you can send twelve or fourteen to a JV game and, you know, you're okay. So there's a very good possibility that we will, we will do a JV program as well for those younger kids.
Anyone else? Doug, Dale, sorry.
And if the numbers come up, we can, in the following year, petition to move up?
Absolutely. It's, um, they want it, um, to be a one-year commitment so that should numbers go up, then we can, we can apply back up to play eleven man. Yes.
And one, thank you for giving your Wednesday and Friday to the Jake Lord Foundation too.
My pleasure, thank you.
Joe?
So you hit on a couple names, but what other, what, what locations around are in that league?
So this past year, there were ten teams, um, ranged anywhere from Ellsworth to Saukapi Valley, um, and a bunch in between. They did two divisions, a large school and a small school. More than likely with our population, we wouldn't be in a large school. But in talking with Mike, we went to this eight-man football state championship so we could kind of, I took David Frye, our football coach, with me so we could kind of look at it and see what it was like and, you know, really get a good handle on it. We're expecting sixteen to twenty, um, so they're probably gonna double in the numbers of schools that are going to eight-man next year. That's the expectation, I mean, um, and some people are coming in now. I'm expecting there'll be a few more big schools that will be joining. I have heard some, I don't know whether that's true or not, but I'm expecting it could be, you know, we could be in a large man, large eight-man division or a small eight-man division, I don't know. I think travel would be a little bit more for us, but.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any public comments? The list is, is anybody on the list, Sherry?
Uh, nope.
And board comments? Joel?
I don't know if I'm jumping on your bandwagon yet, but I, I want to thank the board members that helped out with the Lego competition, uh, we had here and TJ and all the facility stuff that went on here. We had the Western Maine qualifier for Lego League here. And I, I can stop there if you're planning to do anything. But there's, there's, the state championship is this, this Saturday over in Augusta. Well, we'll have three teams over there, so. So I just want to thank everybody and pass it on.
Excellent. Anyone else? Either? That's okay. That's only for voting.
Just want to make sure I'm following the protocol. Um, I just want to thank Mr. Keller for having an excellent, uh, basketball game Wednesday night. I'm not a great basketball fan, but I was very pleased at how attendance was and the conduct of fans and players. Thought it went very well and very pleased with how we conducted ourselves and how the operation did as well. It's very refreshing to meet this hopefully. And your organization.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Oh? Yeah?
Just, just beat it.
Yeah, um, I was lucky enough to be able to go to the ornament night at, uh, Spruce Elementary. And it was really well organized, um, and a lot of the school staff was there. Uh, but one in particular, Mr. Labonte, from the music department, uh, had, uh, Christmas carols and a sing-along at the very end and kids were getting up and dancing. And it was very cute and nice to see. It's, it's my heartfelt.
Okay. Superintendent?
Hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving break. Uh, since our last meeting, uh, on October, uh, excuse me, on November twenty-fifth, I had a breakfast meeting with the superintendent of the Western Maine Regional Service Center, talking about all the different issues that are out there across the state. On December second, Crystal Flag and I met with bank members from, um, the Portland Investment Company to discuss our scholarship accounts and to see where those investments were. Uh, on December fourth, I had my monthly meeting with, uh, Local Education Association President Nate Harndon. On the tenth, I met with our safety committee and our local safety agencies. We went over what we are doing well and what the next steps are for moving forward to make our schools even safer. On the eleventh, I met with superintendents from the Western Maine Superintendent's Association, which is actually different from the Western Maine Regional Service Center. Uh, and we set up, we're gonna be meeting again, we meet monthly, we're gonna meet next month and actually pandemic and the Commission of Education will be at that meeting so we can get some insight on direction of what you think are going, uh, in education for the state. Uh, today we had our ad team meeting and we discussed technology and administrative evaluations that need to be done. We've had a couple of negotiation meetings with the Teamsters and that those negotiations are going very well at this time. I continue to make my weekly visits to our school. I continue to meet weekly with Board Chair Staples. Um, and all managers and administrators will have their building budgets turned in by the end of the day tomorrow so we can start that long process.
Any questions, Scott? Great. Administrator reports, Mr. Harrington?
Um, a whole bunch of things have been going on lately. So one of the things I want to congratulate, Mrs. Corrier. She applied for a capacity grant that goes through with the, the school pantry for five hundred dollars for metal shelving and also some funds to, uh, recognize volunteers. And we did get that, so that's great. A couple of things that have gone by now, we did a picture makeup day just recently. Uh, we did, uh, purchase forty sleds through the PBIS team. And twenty are out on the playground now and, uh, twenty will go as the other ones get a little tired. And we just, we need a little snow now, so we, we had some snow and then it got a little rough. Uh, Mr. Drew and his animals too were at the school there back on eleven-twenty-six. And if you've seen Mr. Drew, he brings in a lot of animals and, uh, comes exotic things. Anytime I see a snake, I'm done. I'm going. I want to dance both snakes, but, uh, all set, I'm going. So he just brought a snake and, uh, but the kids loved it and they seemed to like to see him running off. But it's funny. Uh, we did many Thanksgiving baskets that were put together and, and taken out and just confidentially done and it worked out really well. PBIS committee is a very active committee and there's always some other award that we have a piece that they've added here in the last year. And it's a PBIS award and it's, it's based on our, our values, kind, safe, responsible and respectful. So depending on the month as we rotate through, that we'll have one of those that we're focused on. And the thing that they've added is including the parents in it and the kids don't know the parents. They don't know they get any award and the parents, that kind of covert operation, we bring in the parents. So it'll be, it's a packed house and it goes really, really well and they love that. And of course, we always start with Pledge of Allegiance and we throw in a little bit of music in there and it's pretty good tech. So, and then the awards and a big picture opportunity. So that's a simple thing, but it's really worked out well and the kids are looking forward to it every day. Uh, as to the next month and perhaps they'll be on the list next time and so forth. Uh, we did have a family ornament night at the primary school back on twelve-five that went really well and, uh, people enjoyed that, PTO does that and they do a really good job with it. Uh, other PTO, uh, PBIS activities coming up, uh, because we do this all through the year. So the January one is going to be, uh, and these, uh, the students, by the way, have a lot of input on this. Uh, marshmallow toothpick structures, that, that was a big hit last year. We're doing it again. Try that one out. Uh, February, there's a dance party, they truly enjoy that. Uh, these are during the school day. Uh, March, the Read Across America. April, the big movie up to Nell Gage cinema. They love that one, the whole school goes, good time. And then Wayne for Maine in June, uh, in May, and then we have our regular field day in, in June. So a lot of good things that they're looking forward to and they, they know, uh, gotta kind of keep your act together. You're gonna be able to participate. And, uh, that, that little carrot seems to help. So far, so good. Those things are a lot of fun and they, they really do a good job organizing those. Concerts, there's a whole long list of things going on with concerts. Better if the select chorus was at the Harris House in Sandy River today. And, uh, that was culminating activity after that, which they really enjoyed. And the folks at the, at the, both of those locations really enjoyed seeing the kids and singing with them and talking with them. Uh, but they also went to Birkin. They were a lot of Birkin hats and happy kids, so yay. Um, and I do believe you will get a copy through Laura if you don't have it already. It has all those dates and so forth. Our holiday spirit week starting right up here on the sixteenth, uh, through the twentieth, the happy on the twentieth. So on Monday, you'll see a lot of kids wearing the following. Uh, Monday, it'll be holiday headbands or Santa hats. Tuesday, you wear your favorite holiday socks or leggings. I probably won't do leggings. Wednesday, sparkly clothes, I like, yeah, that's good stuff. And Thursday, your holiday sweater and Friday pajama day. They love pajama days, so we'll throw that in there. Uh, the giving tree that we do annually, there have been little dozens and dozens of families that have been assisted with that and it, it's, there's a couple of locations in the building that we have. The things that start to overflow and things that go out to families and, uh, so there's a, really, the spirit is really high on that and that's great. And it's, we, it'll help a lot. So we're thrilled that folks are taking that and run with it. And enrollment, it's up today, see, four hundred and three students, uh, two hundred and one of them are boys and two hundred and two are girls. And I'll mention just a little bit that Patrick, are you mentioning anything about a little girl named Sumit? Then I'm on it.
You can do it.
Okay. We have a little girl, she's currently, Sumit, uh, is at the elementary school now. She's the fourth grader, I believe, and she's part of four H. Well, she did a project where she, uh, raised fifteen hundred dollars and she wanted to have a buddy bench at both schools. So we just received a letter today and I don't know if you guys came in, but we got ours today. And, uh, I mean, the nicest little girl you'll ever meet, she's awesome. Very, very talented too. And, uh, so she sent us a well-written letter with kind of what she had in mind and, uh, her expectations. We got a choice to make on the, if we want the bench to be one that is something that can be moved around or we want it permitted in the ground. And I just highlighted just a few things here relative to the buddy bench and the four reasons to sit on the buddy bench. So this will be out of the recess area in some place for us away from where the plow tries to get it. We plow all the way around school. Well, we got the buddy bench, we'll have it out there. It says, so four reasons, um, if you are new to the school, though you don't know anybody at recess and perhaps you need a friend or something. And we'll work this into our town meetings, which is our school assembly, so that the kids all know what the buddy bench is all about. And if you see somebody sitting there, then go on over and say hello and maybe play during recess. So they'll do that. If you want to make, simply if you want to make a new friend, which is great. If you want to play something different than what your friends are playing at the, at that time. And if you are, for, for some reason feeling left out, you can go to the buddy bench and the school will focus in on that and you'll be having fun before you know it. So a lot of good things going on there. Uh, in addition to that, uh, report cards went out. I went through many, many of the report cards to look and see how we're doing and so forth. The numbers were solid there, NWA scores are, are looking impressive also. In the areas where we have more need, we're focused on that. Uh, Carly Thibodeau got cited, our RPI interventionist is, is up and running now, full, full speed ahead. So that's an amazing asset and thank you very much that we could have that. Uh, so that position's up and running and, uh, some of those kids that truly, if I just looked at our overall program and the places we needed a, a little help, that was one of them. So to get that in place this year has been really exceptional, so thank you very much.
Any questions, Scott?
Um, I would like to suggest that we send a letter to Sumit. Is that her name, Sumit?
Yep.
And thank her for really stepping up and trying to do something to help the children in our school.
Thank you.
I, you want me to write that?
That'd be great.
A spelling of her person?
Uh, yep, it's S-U-M-I-T-T.
And she's at J.
One T. Yep, and she's a fourth grader at the elementary. Yep.
I actually taught her mother.
Oh, oh, very nice.
Doug?
See, that one, those NWA scores come out, can you provide them to the board?
Yep, well, connect with Chris and we'll put them on.
It'd be great to see those.
Kind of liking this podium, but I feel too tall.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Anderson?
I think this podium's about the right height as well. Always that well. Thank you. So if, I feel like it's been a long time since I've been able to give some report. Uh, last Friday, uh, we, uh, distributed our first trimester report cards at the middle school. Uh, we had a lovely, small technical glitch that prevented one class from showing, so we quickly ran another batch. So all of our kids got to do their, their grades twice. Um, uh, October, uh, we had student of the month. The theme that month was perseverance. Uh, so we had, our sixth grade recipients were Devon Bryant and Olivia Mancini. Our seventh grade recipients were Avery Desi and Jenna Farmer. And our eighth grade recipients were Maya Henry and Starlin Sweetser. Uh, and our theme for, uh, November, uh, is being a good friend. And those recipients have not been announced yet. Uh, earlier this week, we had music concerts. Chorus was on Tuesday, I didn't make it to that. However, I made it to the, uh, band concert on Wednesday, uh, which was great. I love going to a band concert, uh, and I can't help but think about when I was in middle school and played the tuba and the French horn, uh, but I liked tuba better. Uh, and the kids did a great job and, uh, Dan does a fantastic, uh, job working with those students. It was great before, I stood at the bottom of the steps there in the lobby when they were coming down. You know, and you can tell they're all nervous. I'm like, "You guys got this, you got this." And they're like, "No, no, we don't." But they did a great job. Uh, our winter athletic season's in full swing with cheering and boys and girls basketball. Uh, I've been to a couple of games. I'm not an athlete, so middle school athletes look like they are doing an amazing job to me. Uh, and I stopped by the gym the other day and cheering practice was going on. And there's almost twenty-five girls that are doing cheering practice and it is amazing to see one person organize them. And, uh, so that was great to see. Uh, our gifted and talented program, uh, is currently really digging into advanced math and science topics and concepts. Uh, and, uh, today, uh, I took a team of seven teachers from all three grade levels to, uh, Whittier Middle School in Poland to explore their use of restorative practices for school culture and working, uh, through processing, uh, behavior and discipline incidents, which was fantastic. We were there for almost the entire day from, you know, ten-thirty until almost three o'clock. Uh, and lots and lots of great, uh, opportunities to consider, uh, putting into place, uh, here at Spruce Mountain. So we'll be spending a fair amount of time exploring whether or not that's really the right direction for us. But the team that went today was really impressed with what we saw there. It's also reassuring to see, uh, middle school kids in another school that are also just like ours. Uh, so that was, that was really good for us. Um, we also, uh, have begun, uh, an initiative at the middle school with exploring our schedule and how we organize our students and, uh, what we can do to gain some better flexibility with our, our schedule. We're kind of locked in tight with our current structure and we need to add some flexibility there to better meet the needs of our students. We started out with a staff survey and, uh, it was ninety-two or ninety-four percent, I can't remember, believe that we need to move in the direction of adopting something new. So a really solid base for, um, uh, moving forward with something new. So we'll be working on those two items, exploring restorative and, uh, considering, um, schedule structure changes for next year, really throughout the rest of the year. Tomorrow, we have our first trimester reward trip for students, uh, that had solid grades, uh, solid attendance and solid behavior. Uh, we've got more than two hundred kids that are heading up to the movies. And Jumanji comes out tomorrow and these kids get like first crack at it at like eight-thirty in the morning. So that, I know we have a lot of kids that are super excited about that. Uh, and let's see, uh, thank you to Mr. Pike for mentioning Lego League, it was not on my list. I will give you all of the credit for bringing that to our attention. Uh, and, uh, two more items. Uh, I, I continue to be super impressed with, uh, the teamwork, uh, from the staff at Spruce Mountain Middle School. Uh, I knew that when we took a team of seven teachers out of the building that we would not end up with all the subs that we needed to make it happen. Uh, and this morning, when we were figuring out what our plan is gonna be, yeah, it was not work at all on my end. People jumped in, "I'll stay here, you go there," and I was just super, super impressed. People jumped in. I'll stay here, you go there. And I was just super, super impressed with how team-oriented the staff is there to make sure that we're, we're meeting the needs of our kids in a really smooth way. And lastly, at my last report, I mentioned that we were doing a dance. That was at the end of October. And there were some funny comments about the dance. But I must say that we had more than two hundred kids attend that dance at the end of October. And it was absolutely the most fun school event that I've ever been involved in. The kids were amazing. They had fun. I mean, the entire time, we probably had fifty to sixty kids in the gym that were doing games and four-square and basketball. And the, the, the dance was hilarious because there was music, but not much dancing. And then, you know, we had the, we had that one classroom open for kids that just wanted to have a quiet space or board games. And I was so glad that we thought to do that because the entire night, I mean, we had probably between eight and twelve kids in there that just wanted to sit and talk and play some games and have some fun. So, we'll probably replicate that a couple of times before the school year's over. So, it was fun and I'd do it again. I'm happy to answer any questions that folks may have.
Questions for Greg? Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time.
Mr. Hollingsburg.
I'm glad that Greg went to get some resort of justice out of you. We may have to have an admin resort of justice on his, a lot of time.
We can go circle if you want.
Maybe he should show us how to punish him. So, in the technology area, obviously with, with being down a person. Done a lot of research in the last month, talking to districts around us to see what they're doing for staffing. And as I said, they've been very open and sharing information with us as far as the staffing they have, what jobs they fill, as well as what the costs are for their district as well. Most districts are like us, they, their tax are on an hourly pay. There are a couple of districts that actually pay the salary. But I think even when they're paying the salary, it's still somewhat similar to what the hourly cost would be that, that's being paid out. I was happy to see that a lot of the other districts are paying about, right, you know, within a few dollars, the same hourly rate we're paying our tax. That was the good news. The bad news is pretty much every district I talked to had one person doing data and one person that did the networks and the servers. And that's where we had one awesome person doing both of those jobs. So, in looking at it, I'm not sure that there's going to be any way around seeing a little bit of an increase in that area. Because what I see, what I envision is getting a data person who, who can do the Power School and do all the things that our teachers are used to having now to get the data out of and do the input for the, for the state reports and all that. But then also, probably looking at hiring out or entering in a contract with somebody that can work on our servers and our network when the needs arise. Luckily, with servers and networks, they're more of a, you know, when it goes down, you've got to get it fixed. But then there's times that it goes by without having to worry too much about them because they run. And more and more, we're moving, when we can, to cloud-based, which makes things run a little smoother. So, so, that's kind of what we're looking at now and want to let you know that so when a bunch of times come, you'll, you'll see some of that. Doesn't necessarily mean we're trying to go up a lot of money. You may just need to look at what, you know, what we can cut in other places in order to make that happen on the, on the personnel side. I don't know. Great talk, Greg. I might as well keep talking. It was, um, Kevin's laughing because it's usually him on camera. I don't know if you guys saw it. It was in the, it was in the paper and on the Daily Bulldog. Wonderful article about RSG nine, state assessment data showing improvements. I'd like for them to write the same article about us. Not that I'm competitive at all. But so, so they were, I compared their data to our data. And when you look, when I looked at it, except for one area, which I'll talk about, we were, we were pretty much mirrored Mount Blue. I mean, they talked about in their language arts, how, you know, and that's the way the state looks at it now. They look at the year seventeen eighteen and compare it to last year's and then the growth you're making, which is wonderful that they're doing a growth model now. And, and Mount Blue talked about how they were excited about how they were moving up. They showed thirteen point improvement. Over the same time, we showed twelve points improvement, so, in the, in language arts. So, we're excited about that. They talked about the MEA science and how they, what did they do? They were, they were at, they had gone up from seventeen eighteen to eighteen nineteen and now we're at fifty-eight percent. We went up from seventeen eighteen from fifty to fifty-three percent. So, we're, we're moving up as well. Same with SAT at the, at the high school. They went up from seventeen eighteen to eighteen nineteen in literacy. They went up six points, six percent in their growth. So, the one area where we didn't stay, stay with Mount Blue, where they actually went up, they went three percent in math. And they talked about how the state really, across the state, they've actually decreased by one percent. Wow. In this one case, we beat the state. We decreased by two percent. So, that's the one area that we definitely need to focus on is math. And I have my thoughts. I've been looking at this for a couple of years now. And I know the staff at the elementary has heard me say that we really need to look at our everyday math program. It's, it's a program that we've had since I've been here, going over thirteen years now. And at the time, it was a, a good program, but I think over the years, we've seen and data has shown that the everyday math program is not what our kids need anymore. And that we really need to look at a different math program. And so, you know, I think my goal is going to be to fast-track looking at some different math programs to help because I think, and if you know anything about everyday math, it's a secular program. So, it touches on a concept, touches on a lot of concepts and then comes back around. Unfortunately, the students we have, they, you know, they truly need a more linear program. They need to get the concepts and have them tight before they move on to the next one. So, in some ways, we're going back to the way we learned math, more linear than, than secular in whole, kind of whole language style. So, so, that's going to be one of my goals for the rest of the year is to talk to the elementary and primary about starting to look at some different programs in math that maybe would fit the students we have now to, to really help them. Because I think that also affects the middle school and the high school if we don't have the programs at the younger levels to, to make sure they're getting what they need. So, so, good news and bad news.
Any questions for Chris?
From a comment from a parent who sat in Michelle LaClare's class because my child started everyday math in third grade. I agree with that. Not every student can learn everyday math. So, for the ones who struggle with that, they're, the teachers need another, which most of them use another path.
Right.
But I think I totally would agree with switching that.
And I think for, for, for some years now, we've actually been adding on to everyday math. You know, I know at the elementary school, they're doing a whole separate program for, for just facts to make sure kids learn facts.
Right.
But we need to stop trying to add on to the program.
Cursive is coming back around again as well. So, I mean, education is cyclical. But parents aren't able to help their students pass fifth grade anymore in math because they don't know how to teach them. Not, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Learn fast.
Any other questions or comments?
You talked about technology a little bit and how we're shorthanded now. How are you going to manage that for the rest of the year? Is it all purely outsourcing?
No, I mean, I think, I think Mr. Albert and I have to talk a little bit more about it. My thinking is that we could start to look at, you know, unlike a teacher position where it's going to be hard to grab somebody away, a technology position, we may be able to look for a data person sooner rather than later. I'm going to get that person in now to try to help untake off some of that load. You know, and then, you know, I think because of my own feelings, I've been slower to move on that than we could have. But, you know, I'm just being cautious. But I think we are getting to that time, beginning of the new year, where we're going to have to advertise and, and bring somebody in.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chris. Mr. Ford, and since I think Mr. Ford had gone to Mr. Hollingsburg, you're on the clock started right now.
I am. Thank you. Before we get going, I do want to commend the board. I will say that coming to board meetings this year has been a, a welcome thing. And I, I wanted to make sure that you heard that from me. And I commend you on that. And, and just to know that I have some school board members and, that will bring up the good things. And Lynn, when you say, hey, we ought to send out a note to a student, that's huge. And I just want to say thank you. Before we go any further, I am going to speak with you quite a bit later on when we do the walk-around. So, I will go through a couple of the things that make sense. So, first one, band concert. The Christmas band concert is on Tuesday at seven PM in the middle school gym. We did have the theater program this past week. It was outstanding. It was sister act, if, if, he is a natural. They did a great job and I definitely want to just draw attention to them and the amount of work that goes into that. Great job with that. And one other thing that as we go on the walk, where I want to show you our, our new receptionist that is out in the front. I will kind of show you that new technology that we've been using. It's been a very good addition. And I'm a ski-er, so thanks snow. That's all I have.
That was one minute thirty-nine seconds.
One minute thirty-nine? I got them later anyway, so I, I can chirp in there here.
Any questions or comments for TJ? Mr. St. Clair.
Hoping to have quality. Good evening. My list is shorter than Greg's, but I think longer than Chris's. We just did our monthly PBIS reward. And one thing that I talked to the students staff on is that growth mindset. And I think it's important that kids know that where they start doesn't define who they are, but the hard work and what they put into it and where they grow shows us the true spirit of who they are. So, this month, we looked at most improved, whether it was being more respectful, more responsible, more safe, or if it was academically, you know, if you were a student who struggled with reading or math or writing or whatever it was. We looked for those kids that had put the effort in to improve. And, and from those students, we always do a minute to win it challenge. And this month, we took Kleenex boxes and we put little beads in them and tied them to the kids. They had a minute to try to get all of the little bells out any way they could without using their hands. So, the kids had a minute. And for third grade, Mrs. Healy's class was our minute to win it champions. Fourth grade was Mrs. Lake's class. And then, fifth grade was Mrs. Eva's class. Next, the clothing closet. We were able to, this has been a great thing. We had, we took all the clothing that we had been donated and we laid it out in the library. And Mrs. Stone each year puts out to, to all the kids in the building, you know, sends home to the parents, you know, kids who need hats, gloves, you know, whatever. We get it back. And we were able to take those kids, there were thirty of them, and we were able to allow them to go in and shop. So, they could go in and pick whatever hat they wanted, whatever gloves they wanted, whatever coat. Boots. That, that wiped us out, but Pam graciously contacted me and wanted to see how the closet was going. And she ran an article. And, and the donations have been amazing. We're, you know, we're filled back up. We have boots. We have hats. We have gloves. So, that was a, a great thing for the kids. You know, and if there are kids in other buildings that need stuff, I'm more than happy to send it. You know, just let me know what sizes, because we have all kinds of different sizes for, for the kids. Another great thing is, unlike Chris, I am competitive. And I was given a, an email from Mrs. Knavich about, it's called Winter Kids, Winter Games. And they pick two schools per county and then you compete. And I said, okay, I like that. I like to compete. And then, it was about, you know, outdoor physical activity. It's about nutrition. Part of it's a family engagement where you get the families to cut, you know, to, to take home a challenge and do the challenge at home. There's a winter carnival where the kids get to do outdoor activities. I think that in Maine, we have such a great opportunity to be outside in the winter. And I think that there's a lot of kids that may not see that, that the wintertime is probably my favorite time. I probably do more in the winter. So, it's a four-week challenge that begins in January. And each week, you're graded on a rubric. We have to turn the rubric in. And then, at the end of it, they rank the top two, three, four, five schools. And we have an opportunity to win about, well, we could win up to, well, it's dispersed over all the schools that are in the top, but twenty thousand dollars in cash and prizes. So, that starts in January. I will be sending email out looking for people who have different talents, whether it's cooking or, you know, if you like to ice fish or, you know, to try to get some of these activities in to teach the kids about. But I think it's going to be a great thing. And anytime I can compete about against the rest of the state, I like that. We just finished our popcorn fundraiser. The kids did really well. Mrs. Thornton's class sold the most number of bags. There was a hundred and twelve bags sold in her class. Mrs. Derring's class was the fourth grade winners and Miss Lake's class was the fifth grade winners. We just finished up with tooth angels. It's a great thing to see that the kids who don't have an opportunity at the regular dental, dental care can get, you know, from brushings to floss to, I didn't know they even took teeth out. They extracted teeth. They've done, they did crowns. They did sealants. The kids that they couldn't take care of right there, they've made appointments for so those kids can go out and get those dental needs taken care of. Ornament night. Ornomite was a great thing. Thank you, Phoebe, for bringing that up. The kids had a blast. You know, they went and they did their ornaments. We had a hundred and one students show up and they did their ornaments. And then, they went into the, the gym where Mr. Levante played music and they really had a good time.
Any questions for Pat?
If you know the answer, you can answer, but I'm sorry. If we have clothing we'd like to donate to teens or high school students, how would we, would we contact Mrs. Taylor for that, for her pre-store? Because I've had a few people ask me.
I've donated through the social worker, Kristy Levante.
Okay.
Before. Thank you. She answered it.
We have our own area for clothes.
Okay. I'll bring them in sometime.
And Catherine Siggin's at the middle school.
Okay, I think I have.
My comment was with your winter kids thing. I am a member of the Andrew Skargan Land Trust Community Forest Advisory Group. And ALT owns many parcels of land that were donated from Verso like five years ago. And I know the Spruce Mountain area has trails. French Falls has trails. So, they might be able to provide some information for you as, you know, like leases to go outside for snowshoeing across country.
So, I'll send you an email and?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, we meet like four times a year and there's a representative from ALT that comes up and she's in charge of a lot of forest management stuff. But anyway, it's available for recreation, too.
Yeah, I really wanted to get the kids involved in, you know, the stuff that they can do, you know, that's relatively inexpensive and it's close, you know, that, that they can do locally.
Right.
You know, we don't have to leave the area to do some really great things.
Right, exactly. Yeah, email. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
They also have the sledding down there, too, that's coming up pretty soon. So, they really deck out the French Falls area with a huge sledding hill. And you can probably take advantage of all the resources you have down there after the sledding, so.
And I also wonder if like the high school Nordic ski team would be willing to, you know, work with you. Well, I'm volunteering them without even like talking to them.
I invented an email saying, hey, this is what we're looking to do. You know, if there's anybody that has.
I invented an email saying, hey, this is what we're looking to do, you know, if there's anybody that has these skills, you know. Because I'm not an expert in any of those things, well, sledding I'm pretty good at, but.
TJ, is there still, is there a service credit at the high school of some sort?
There's not, there's, you can get credits for service, absolutely, you know, it's not mandatory.
But kids might.
Absolutely.
Something like that.
Just one more comment, you keep talking about how competitive you are. Next time we have a minute to win it, can you bring a couple of those for you and Chris to compete in front of us?
Phoebe has no chance.
This shows you how, how well I've hidden my true self.
Today I received a little printout from the school, talking about the school store and how items can be donated to that. Can you expand a little bit on that?
Well, the school store, the kids, if they're caught being respectful, responsible, say, our core values in the school, they can earn coins. So, you know, we're looking for the positive things, I think sometimes schools can focus on the negative things. And I don't think kids learn that way, I think that when you're positive with them and that, you know, that they know that you're looking out for their best interests and you're trying to help them better themselves, you know. I, I, I think that's the way to go and that's why we do PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. And with those tokens, we have free shells, five, ten, and twelve, and then they can also buy tickets for a raffle. And they can go to the school store and then purchase different items using the coins.
I meant what kind of items you want us to donate?
Oh, sorry. School appropriate.
Pensils.
You would be surprised, we've had.
Twenty, tens of twenties would be good, yeah.
Tens or twenties, no, some things, you know, guns and, not real guns, but you know, stuff. But, you know, toys, little cars, you know, the boys like the cars, matchbox, those kind of things. Coloring books, coloring stuff that, that goes over well, we'll stuff the animals and stuff, I mean, we will put anything on there. If it doesn't, if it doesn't, Legos are, that's like gold, they love Legos. So, I mean, if it doesn't end up selling, if we notice, we'll take it and we'll use it for something else. So we're, we're always open for free stuff.
Anyone else? Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got just a couple of things, you have your first homework assignment. It's actually, I just want to show you what you're going to be reading from here to here, it's three lines, three sentences. So, that was for Doug because I knew Doug was going to be really upset by reading a lot, I think even Doug can handle that. For those of you who, who don't really look at things, the, it's BEC policy is on the back for you, so you're going to have to look that up, Doug. And then the other thing too, just, just in case, I didn't know if anybody saw, I was in a newspaper the other day and they put my title in, it had nothing to do with the school board, I was there as a private citizen and they just happened to list that that's what my title was, so. So I was not there as a representative of the school board. That's all I have, so. Joel, you have anything for, I actually generated the policy anyway, so.
I was going to say, there's three things on the list here.
Yeah, I was looking at committee reports, so. So, on the policy, we have the second and final reading of BCC, the nepotism policy. I entertain a motion to accept the second and final reading of BCC nepotism policy.
So moved.
Moved by Mike.
Second.
Second by Phoebe, any discussion on that one? If none, all those in favor? Opposed? Not voting? That's Dale, not voting. And we have the first reading of BBBA Board Member Qualification Policy, we have a motion on that.
So moved.
Moved by Mike, second.
Second.
By Doug. Discussion, Joel.
So, as I had said at the last meeting on BCC, which we just went through, we're trying to clean up some of the language on these to try to make them consistent. And on this one here, unfortunately, we came very close to making them consistent, so I'd like to make a slight amendment.
Do we do a regular amendment or a friendly?
I hope it's a friendly one.
Make the amendment, we'll see if you accept it.
That I would like to make a slight change on it where in the last section of it, where it says no member of the board or spouse, right after the word spouse, it should say of a member, similar to what the other two we're looking at says, so just adding of a member. And again, the intent is to have these all have the exact same phrase in them, so.
Do you accept that?
I do.
Do you accept that? Any further discussion on that?
And that was the original text, I screwed that up by when I was typing and left that piece out and they were all supposed to be exactly the same.
If no further discussion, all those in favor of the first reading of BBBA? Opposed? And I guess I should have said as amended here, as amended. And the first reading of BCB, the Board Member Conflict of Interest Policy. I'd have a motion to accept the first reading of that. Motion by Doug, second. Someone, Phoebe? Any discussion on that? If not, all those in favor of the first reading of BCB, Board Member Conflict of Interest. Opposed? So moved. And I entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to one MRSA 4056A.
So moved.
Moved by Mike, second by Sarah. All those in favor? So moved. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna stay, you guys.
By earlier reports, we're starting on this end much quicker. So we can work on things over vacation and then I'll be meeting with the administrators and managers individually with Crystal and I to really dissect the budget. You have a question, Joel, it looks like you have.
Oh, I just wanted to, I'm just going back to our last, did we have to do anything coming later?
That's coming up under appointments. By the way, does it, can I get shut off?
It did, yes. We were all watching it out there.
He had nothing to do with it.
I asked him before he left, but.
Does anybody have any questions about the budget timeline?
Now I'll go ask you on this one, I mean, my biggest question, because it always seems like we get about eighty percent of the way through one of these things, we figure out we overlapped it on top of something or whatever or didn't line up with, I mean, has this all been vetted around? Any other, like the votes, the towns and whatnot?
Remember we made the changes so it didn't happen during vacation?
Yeah, I just want to make, we, because I honestly didn't go check all that.
No, we made it as, we made it as clean as possible.
So guaranteed we won, other than stuff?
Other than stuff.
Okay. No other questions, we'll move on, under appointments, the co-curricular appointments, you can have your list. Right, under sixteen-two, entertain a motion, superintendent nominates Heather Hyatt to the position of special service social worker for Spuce Mountain Elementary and Primary Schools.
I'm a motion to Hyatt, Heather Hyatt, to the position of special service social worker for Spuce Mountain Elementary and Primary.
Motion by Lynn, second. By Lena. Here, her count was just up quickly. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, so moved. And the other informational item here, under appointments and regulations, is resignation of Adam Mason, bus driver custodian. And I think that's with regret. And, Mr. Ford, you're up.
We're up, you guys want to get ready and go for a walk?
What room is this?
This is the library, you guys know that.
I would like to have a new rug, but no.
I thought we were going away from rugs.
Libraries have a quiet.
They have tiles that are sound.
I know, I'd like. We're not going to be going outside, no, you can leave your jackets, everything. It is cold.
Mrs. Brenner wants to stop.
The calendar, or we're back in session, I should say. Calendar, very ninth regular school meeting at the primary school. Don't forget policy at five, the twenty-third at the elementary school. And finance will meet at five-thirty, you will get your budget books. And the thirtieth, the budget, first budget overview meeting at Spuce Mountain Middle School.
So, I've been cleaning out some stuff and I have a couple of big white binders for the budget books.
We'll take them.
Take them back?
Yeah, we'll take them back, plus we're looking at this year buying smaller ones because you never fill them anyway and they're more expensive. So we're looking at going to Dollar Tree and getting the inch ones. But if you have left old binders that you want to turn in, I have.
Can you just give us the three hole punch version of it and refill whatever we want? As an option? I mean, I know we're doing electronic anyway.
Because after the first meeting, that first binder, we usually have papers that replace the budget because the numbers change or.
Anyone else?
So you guys can let Laura know what you, if someone wants the book, or if alls you want is the papers, the innards, yeah.
We have a motion to adjourn, Mike's ready. Motion by Andrew, adjourn, the second by Kami, all those in favor, so moved.